Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this special meeting of Wigtownshire Licensing Board. This meeting is being recorded and live streamed. Can I remind members to follow the good practice guidance, which includes muting microphones and switching off their video when you're not addressing the meeting? Should you wish to contribute to any item, you should write speak in the team's chat function or raise your virtual hand and you will be invited to speak in order. Should your question or issue be raised by a previous speaker, please withdraw your request so that we deal with the business as efficiently as possible. That completes the introductory. What a wording. Could we go to item one, which is the cedaring and apologies?
Thank you, Convenor. We have apologies from councillor Sloan.
Thank you. I see councillor Ingles has joined the meeting as well.
Morning all.
Morning David. You have my approval of members' remote participation in this meeting. Moving to item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Nothing from me, Chair.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, Ross.
I just want to say that I am a local person. I am acquainted with the applicant. I am not a curler. I'm not part of the club in any way, but occasionally I do watch the curling. So I just wanted to say that I am local and therefore acquainted, but I don't think that that association would require me to not partake in the discussion.
Thank you very much, Ross. Your comments are noted. I'm hearing no other speakers, so could we move on therefore to the business of this meeting? Item three, Licensing Scotland Act 2005, section sixty eight. An application for extended hours at the North West Castle Hotel Stranraer. The applicant is Macmillan Hiddells, based at the North West Castle Hotel, Stranraer. Caroline, do you want to go through the procedure and give us some background to this special meeting?
Yes, of course, Convenor. I do believe that we have a Mr Douglas Macmillan, who's managing director of the applicant company hotel. Can I just check? I can see Mr Macmillan on my screen. Mr Macmillan, can you just confirm that you can hear me, please?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just turning to the report, Convenor. This is indeed an application for extended hours in respect of North West Castle Hotel in Stranraer under section sixty eight of the Licensing Scotland Act 2005. You're asked to consider an extended hours application received on the eleventh of January 2022. The application is detailed at appendix one. Subsequent to that application, the applicant submitted an email with superseded amended hours and the amended hours are shown at appendix two. And we've also just, for the sake of simplicity, contained the requested amended hours in the report and those hours that are being requested are at paragraph one point three of your report. In terms of section sixty eight, it gives a discretionary power to licensing boards on the application of the holder of a premises licence in respect of licensed premises. If the board considers it appropriate to do so in connection with a special event or occasion to be catered for on the premises or a special event or local or national significance to extend the licensed hours in respect of the premises by such period as is specified in the application or such other periods as the board considers appropriate. In law, this period of extension cannot exceed one month. Paragraph two point three of the report states the current on-sales licensed hours in respect of the hotel and these are from on a Monday, eleven AM to twelve thirty AM, Tuesday, eleven AM to twelve thirty AM, Wednesday, eleven AM to twelve thirty AM, Thursday, eleven AM to one AM, Friday, eleven AM to one AM, Saturday, eleven AM to one AM and on a Sunday, twelve noon to twelve thirty AM. In terms of consultation, the application was circulated to Police Scotland and also the LSO. And at appendix three, you have the LSO report. You also have at appendix four, a Police Scotland representation. And at appendix five, an email from the applicant responding to Police Scotland's representation. So in terms of suggested procedure, Convenor, you may wish to hear from Police Scotland to speak to their representation, followed perhaps by questions from members. Then thereafter, hear from our LSO and thereafter, any questions from members. And then I would suggest that you allow the applicant to speak to the application, taking into account his response as well to the Police Scotland representation with questions from members, with the applicant being given the opportunity to sum up thereafter and then going into session, Convenor. And of course, I'm here to assist and give guidance if you so wish. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Caroline. Could we therefore go to the police representation? And we have Inspector McComb here to take us through that. Inspector McComb.
Thank you, Convenor. As per appendix four in the pack, our report is a letter dated the twenty fifth of January twenty twenty two, signed by Chief Superintendent Carol Maguire, whom I represent today at this board. The police representation is in relation to, has been described, an application for extended hours over a period from, in relation to the North West Castle, from Mr Dean Macmillan. This is over a period from the tenth of February to the twentieth of February, both dates inclusive, and a total of sixty hours in an extension over this time period where alcohol could be sold to the public for consumption. This represented a significant time, as just alluded to. And we considered again about precedence for the board area that may be replicated either for this event and any future significant sporting events, which is anticipated over the next couple of years. We deemed that there was a possibility that should alcohol be getting consumed in other licensed premises within the Stranraer area, there was a risk and a possibility that people could continue their alcohol consumption, extending their amount of time drinking alcohol for long periods of time to this premises. We are minded for this application to represent that during the times of the extensions, that a personal licence holder is present in the premises in terms of general experience within working in the licensing trade and measures to be put in place by the premises manager and licence holder and staff to control entry to the event by tickets or invite to mitigate the risk that I have just outlined in terms of people from Stranraer Town Centre enjoying the hospitality of other premises, including extending their drinking hours. The representation submitted in consideration of this application and ultimately to support the applicant in providing a safe event within their establishment. And happy to take any questions in that.
Thank you very much, Inspector McComb. Members, you have heard the police representative. Have you any questions? Yes, Ross.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for that report, Inspector. My question is regarding, I hear your concerns about the amount of hours. But I suppose my question is, are the police acquainted with the hotel? Do you, have you attended the hotel for any police reason in the last few months? Are you concerned about any behaviour around the establishment?
Thank you. We've got the Police Scotland and locally police in Stranraer. We have got no adverse reports or any concerns at all about the premises. We identify that it's a well-established premises in the area, it is well-run. So we don't have concerns. If we did, obviously, we would have included it in our report. But we believe this would be an extra safety measure, which is ultimately protect the patrons and the spectators within the hotel, all the staff in the hotel and ultimately support the board's objectives of maintaining public safety.
Chair, may I come back? Thank you very much for that answer. And I just want to also understand if you've been reassured by the measures that have been outlined in the applicant's letters.
Yeah, as per the appendix, we are more than satisfied now that the measures that would be put in place would mitigate any of the concerns that we had and ultimately provide a safer event. So we would be satisfied with those measures as per the representation in the report.
Thank you very much, Inspector. Thank you.
Thank you, Inspector. Katie.
Thank you, Convenor. Yep, thanks for that, Inspector McComb. My question in part has already been answered by councillor, or asked by councillor Sirtis and that was in terms of the police's response in appendix five. And you've just said there that you're more than happy with those mitigations that the hotel have come back with. So if you're more than happy, does that mean that the letter of representation that's before us today is no longer standing? Because if the concerns have been addressed and you're happy with those, does this appendix four that we've got before us with the letter of representation, is that no longer valid, I guess is my question. Thank you.
I would prolrate the advice from the clerk on that, but certainly the representation still stands and we would be looking for that. We would want to bring it before the board today for then considering the determination that these conditions are subject to the extension. So the representation very much still stands, but we are encouraged with the response that we've got from the applicant, that would satisfy our representation. So really, to summarise, we predicted some risk in terms of extra patrons who might have been unwelcome attending at the venue. But this would mitigate it further. However, we believe for the hours and the time of night, that would protect everyone, including the applicant, of those conditions were part of the extension to be granted.
Yep, no, that's great. Thank you. Thanks for that.
Caroline, do you wish to make any comment at this point?
Thank you, Convenor. So yeah, just as Inspector McComb has said, McComb has said, beg your pardon. The Police Scotland are requesting that two conditions be attached to this extension and that Police Scotland wish that request to stand notwithstanding the mitigation measures that the applicant has advised that they would put in place. So just to state that you do have that discretionary power to attach conditions. And if I may say so, in terms of attaching conditions under section seventy A, the law is quite interesting that if you were minded to attach any conditions following the police request, they don't actually attach just to the extension of hours. It's actually to the period of licensed hours which is extended. So basically, it's not just to the extension itself. If you're so minded that you wish to attach conditions to this extension, it would apply to all of the licensing hours. But of course, that's a matter for your consideration if you believe it's necessary expedient for the licensing objectives.
Thank you, Caroline. David, do you wish to come in with any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And thanks Inspector McComb for this report. There's one part of your report that doesn't appear to have been addressed, which is on page fifteen regarding the precedent that this will set. And I believe that there has in the past been events which have involved sporting events, Rugby World Cup, I think is mentioned. But you know, I'm just wondering whether you've still got concerns regarding that. Thanks.
Thanks. I think we mentioned precedents. It would be, we would take every, we would take every application on a case-by-case basis where we would look at the previous history of the premises and any previous adverse reports or even positive reports that we would put in. In terms of precedents being set, what were concerns is if if extensions like this were granted without representation from us for any specific conditions being attached. I do look ahead to further events this year. We've got the Football World Cup in November and we may get similar applications for extensive extensions similar to this, similar type time zone. So that is something in consideration. Now, what I'm not doing is, is I'm not comparing like-for-like events. I'm not comparing like-for-like risk. So we would consider it and we would consider everything in its own merits. But if, what would probably concern us is in terms of precedents getting set would be extensions and all-night drinking without further conditions to mitigate risk, such as ticketed events and invited guests only. So the precedent of not having that would concern us.
Thank you, Inspector McComb. David, are you satisfied with that response?
Yeah, happy with that entirely. Yeah, thanks, Inspector McComb. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, members. I think the questions you've put have all been satisfactorily answered. Can we move on therefore to the LSO report at appendix three? Can I bring in Julia?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Just as a bit of background, obviously, if members are not already familiar, the North West Castle is in a very unique position having the curling rink and a lot of what the hotel does relates to curling, especially during the winter months. So I think if there was anywhere appropriate to host such a thing as the fan zone, it would certainly be appropriate for this hotel. As far as I'm aware, the premises have never came to the adverse attention of the licensing board, certainly not in my time, and I wouldn't have any concerns at all about the running of the premises. This is a unique situation that we're in, in that it's unfortunate that friends and family are unable to travel to Beijing due to the COVID situation and this would be an opportunity for them to be able to enjoy the games and especially with the success that the local curlers are currently having. I don't think I've got anything else to add. Happy to take any questions, though.
Thank you very much, Julia, for that report. Members, have you any questions to put to Julia?
Nothing from me, Chair.
Quite happy with the report, Chair.
Yes, Chair, I'm fine. Thank you. Thanks, Julia.
I have no questions either, Julia. Can we therefore move to the applicant, Mr Douglas Macmillan? If you could speak to your application, please, Douglas.
Good morning, everybody. I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration of our application. We're trying to facilitate it for our curling community who locally they can't at all and they are for looking to, you know, come together and support the teams. The players involved at the Olympics locally have been in around our ice rink, come through our training facilities and developed as curlers, you know, from Stranraer. So they are great ambassadors for Stranraer and their clubs. We are very cognisant of our licensing position and we can assure you that we'll make every effort to comply and more with the conditions being asked for. And to that end, our doors will be locked from ten o'clock onwards and manned by extra porter cover. These folk are experienced in assessing whether people have had a lot of drink or not and they're in control of that. They just don't open the door to somebody who they think might have had too much to drink. On top of that, they would then have to buy tickets to be in the fan zone and our staff are experienced and qualified in looking after curlers and folk drinking later. So I hope the board will be minded to be favourable and we will certainly assure you we will be doing our best to make it a successful and safe event. And we have changed the hours. Initially, we had applied for just twenty-four hours and we took on board the police objection to that and adjusted them. So that the hours we've applied for are the minimum hours to watch the games. And I think importantly, the risk of late night folk coming out of pubs and then looking for somewhere later. You know, we're not, two of the Saturdays, we're not going to be, are not involved. The Saturday the 12th, we don't need any extra licence. And Saturday the 19th, it's from five o'clock in the morning. I don't see them hanging about for a few hours in the cold waiting to get in. So they start at five o'clock on those days. I think it is a unique situation, but where, you know, people can't travel to the event. You know, because, and it's because of Covid restrictions. And I hope they'll be minded to look at it faithfully.
Thank you very much Douglas. I note the mitigation which is being put in place is shown in some detail in appendix five. The correspondence from Mr Cowan dated the 26th of January. The ticketing arrangements are clearly stated there. Members, do you have any questions to put to Mr Macmillan? Katie?
Thank you convener. Yeah, thanks Mr Macmillan for that. And first of all, before I say, just good luck to your nephews. It's fantastic achievement. So I hope they do really well for your family and for Scotland and for the whole team as a whole. So just wanted to put that on record first of all. So obviously, there has been some requests for mitigation put forward. And one of those is that a licence holder should be on the premises at all times. Now, noting what the clerk has said in terms of section 70A, that any conditions attached would be covering the entire date period, not just the extended hours. Can I just ask the question, do you have enough staff who are licence holders to cover that entire period? Just taking into account, you know, work directives and staffing rights etcetera. So it's just really to ask, do you have enough staff to cover all those times going forward?
Yes, we do. My sister Gail Monroe, who's our ice rink manager, is a qualified licence holder. And she'll be in attendance at all times through the evening. Other times of the day, our normal management staff are qualified and will be in attendance. So yes, I believe we do have plenty of cover there. And I'll be a contingency if we have any gaps. I can assure you, I'll fill any gaps.
Yep. Okay. No, that's helpful to know. Thank you. That's all, that's all the questions I thought, convener. Thank you.
Members, any further questions?
Chair, I'm quite happy with the report and some of my questions have been answered. So thank you.
Thanks Rose.
Yeah Chair, yeah, I'm happy with the report as well and the mitigations that Douglas has put in place and the police have accepted. And yeah, I'll reiterate what Katie said and hope your nephews have a really successful games and credit to Wiganshire.
Thanks David. Caroline, do we now have a summing up?
Yes.
Or do you feel that is necessary?
Convener, that's a matter entirely for yourselves. If you, if there's no further questions from members, then you may wish to just actually allow the police a chance to sum up their position and then Mr Macmillan, thank you.
Inspector McCombe?
Thank you convener. And policing summing up, I would probably also like just to put into the record as well that Police Scotland is a national organisation and locally with a lot of local residents also very much support our athletes in the Winter Olympics and we do wish them all the best. We did put this representation forward in the grounds of mitigating it for the safety of everyone involved and that included the hotel staff. So to sum up, yes, I have said we are happy with the mitigation that's presented to our representation. And as I said, we also did and do wish everyone all the best. But we felt it prudent to put this representation in place in relation to this board's licensing objectives.
Thank you Inspector. Mr Macmillan, do you wish to add anything to your previous comments?
Not really, just to thank you again for consideration. And it's just to maybe say, it's not just my nephews that I say, two other local ones and Bobby Lammy from the Swat Curling Club and Vicky Wright from the Swat Curling Club as well, playing with the ladies. And we also have a connection with the people who are playing at the moment, in the mixed doubles, with Jennifer Dodds, whose mother is a Stranraer curler and she has family around Stony Court. So we, we also have Hugh Niblo, an Olympian wheelchair curler. So we hope that they were able to put Stranraer on the map for positive reasons and that we might even get some coverage as other sports have had with fan zones. And we'll certainly be doing our best to make it an enjoyable experience for everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr Macmillan. Members, we are now in session.
Thank you Chair.
Rose?
Thank you Chair. And thank you everybody for your representations. I have no further concerns regarding the application. And I would like to suggest that we move to accept the application of the extended hours as long as we do attach the recommendations for mitigation. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Douglas very much for his application and for allowing such a fantastic opportunity for the fans to attend the games. And I wish everybody from Stranraer who are taking part the very best of luck. I've always said that Stranraer punches above its weight in sporting achievement and this is the absolute pinnacle of achievement. So that's my suggestion that we move to accept the extended hours.
Thank you Rose. I assume Rose, you are referring to the mitigation as set out in appendix five.
That's correct Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments, members?
Convener, if I can come in?
Yes indeed.
Yes, if I can, I'm happy to support councillor's certain suggestion. However, I would appreciate just five minutes in private session with the clerk just to ensure that we've had an opportunity, just to make sure that everything has been covered. So I don't know if other members feel that's appropriate, but I would put it to the other members of the board that we just take five minutes to confirm exactly all the details on this application before granting the application. But I'll pass back to other members if they feel that that's appropriate.
Happy to do that Chair.
Right, David?
Yeah, happy to do that Chair, yeah.
Right, I'm quite happy to concord with that. If we could have a short breakout session.
Can I just ask Sean Davidson, our licensing manager, Sean, are we able to, or Aidan, our senior licensing officer, are we able to facilitate going to an IT breakout session for private deliberation?
Yes, I'll do that just now.
Thanks Aidan.
Thanks Aidan.
Aidan, if you can just kindly tell us when we should leave this forum. Thank you.
I'm.
Thank you very much for your patience. We have now returned. We have had a chance to deliberate on this application. Members, the floor is open. Any comments you wish to make?
Chair, I can come in if you like.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if you can see.
It's starting to think we had no sound.
No, no, you're fine. I don't know if councillor Surtees is... I know she was having problems with audio as well, so I don't know if she is having problems with audio, maybe to type in the chat if so. So yes, we had prior to going into private session, it had been put forward that we went with the recommendations and I will look for guidance to the clerk on this one. But I would happily, as I said previously, support councillor Surtees going forward and that was to extend those hours in relation to the fan zone to make that explicit as detailed in appendix one of the Alpine Lounge and the Edinburgh Room and attach the conditions as requested via Police Scotland and that those are adhered to to the satisfaction of the LSO and Police Scotland. There is detailed mitigation put in there and certainly I'm content that the hotel will adhere to those, but it would be useful to make sure that those are to the satisfaction of Police Scotland and LSO going forward. But I see councillor Surtees is on, so I will maybe defer back to her if I may and as I say, seek clarity to make sure that those those conditions are correct in law as per the clerk's direction. Thank you.
Ross.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much, Katie. Can you hear me now?
Yes, very clearly.
Sorry, I've been having trouble. So thank you very much. I'd like to back up what Katie has just outlined. I'm really happy with the mitigation conditions and so I fully support what Katie has said as long as that's in line with our legal responsibilities, Caroline. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. So the motion is from Katie, councillor Hagman, and second, Ross Surtees. Is that correct, members?
Correct, Chair.
Thank you. David, have you anything to add?
No, happy to agree, Chair.
Thanks very much, David. Thanks for that. And I'm certainly happy to concur with the three other members. I do believe this application, as time has passed, has improved considerably. It is a much more targeted application and the police, the request there for two concerns to be met with regard to a personal licence holder being present and with regard also to control of entry to the fan zone, I do believe these have been satisfactorily met. And as the motion, the proposal of the motion stated, that this should be done to the satisfaction of both the licensing standards officer and Police Scotland. It is well stated there in appendix five. Caroline, have you anything to add?
Convene, just for clarity, so it's a unanimous decision that you're minded to grant subject to the two conditions that the Police Scotland have requested and their representation, number one, that a designated person who's the holder of a personal licence be present on the premises and that measures be put in place to control entry to the event, whether by means of tickets or invite to the satisfaction of Police Scotland or LSO and both those conditions being attached to the licence pursuant to your powers under section 70a of the Licensing Scotland Act 2005 in relation to the secure and public safety objective, just to get clarity.
That, Caroline, states it much more explicitly, yes.
Yes. Would you like me to confirm that decision, members? Okay, thank you.
And can I add my wish that everything proceeds satisfactorily, that the fan zone is a success and at the end of the day, they have very much to celebrate.
Okay, so Mr. MacMillan, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, right, okay. So the licensing board has decided to grant your application as requested in respect of the fan zone, which is in the Alpine Lounge and Edinburgh Room part of the hotel subject to the two conditions that have been requested by Police Scotland. The licensing board does retain the power under section 70a of the Licensing Scotland Act 2005 to attach conditions if it's necessary expedient for any of the licensing objectives in terms of securing public safety. You've already had sight of these requested conditions from Police Scotland, number one, being that a designated person who's the holder of a personal licence be present on the premises. Condition number two, measures be put in place to control entry to the event, whether by means of tickets or invite to the satisfaction of Police Scotland and the LSO. So both these conditions have been attached to, and just say to the request, just for the sake of clarity, these two conditions in law under section 70a don't just apply to the extended hours request, it's actually the period of licensed hours that have been extended. Sorry to get so legally technical, but it's actually the whole operational hours that you'll be operated from. So if you could confirm to the board that both those conditions are acceptable to yourself, Mr. MacMillan?
They are and I fully understand them and we can assure you we'll comply with them all the time, the whole time. I assume it's just for the 10 days. Beyond that, it reverses to normal licensing.
That's correct.
So that's all acceptable and very much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mr. MacMillan, and the best of wishes to the North West Castle Fan Zone and indeed to the British Curlew.
Thank you. I will pass that on.
Thank you very much. I have no other business, members. Can I thank you all for your attendance this morning and wish you goodbye.